10:00 AM on the 4th of March 2025, the town of Richmond. I call this 230th Annual Town Meeting, the Word. Would you all please stand as the Scouts VSA from 2:23 present the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Color Guard, attention! Color Guard, defense! Color Guard, halt! Color Guard, cross the colors. Cross the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to rely on the United States of America and its liberty and our approach to justice. While my nation, America, is invisible, it will be with us.
Color Guard, come out in place. Color Guard, retreat.
Would you please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence to honor those who have served and are currently serving in the Armed Forces to protect the freedoms that we all have today. If we have any first-time voters joining us today, would you please stand and be recognized? Any first-time voters? Okay, a few House rules that we've gone over in the past. No food nor drink in the gymnasium. And please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. I would also like to go over a few procedures that have been in use for some time, but do bear repeating since we're all on the same page. The meeting will be conducted using Robber's Rules of Order, except where superseded by Vermont State law. All remarks or motions should be directed to me, the moderator. Any remarks are to be confined to the merits of the question. All articles must be moved, seconded, and restated by the moderator before discussion can begin. All motions and any amendments are to be made in the affirmative sense. Non-voters may not speak, except by suspension of the rules, which requires a two-thirds vote in the affirmative. And I will try to anticipate this by asking for common consent, such as unless there's an objection, person X will be allowed to speak. This may include town employees or non-residents who may have expertise. Non-voters may not vote by voice vote, nor by any other means. If this becomes a problem, we'll need to figure out some type of segregation that will take place, such that their voice cannot be part of our deliberation. We do have, they approached us earlier today, and we do have three UVM students in the back. Stand up, stand up if you recognize. They're here studying our democratic process, so welcome. Voting on an article will be first by voice vote, and then we have the option to go by hand if needed, or by standing. And then we also have an option for paper ballot. A point on the paper ballot, we can have a paper ballot anytime we wish, providing seven voters call for the ballot. And again, this is per Vermont State Statute 17 VSA 2658, where paper ballots are allowed in that vein. All articles can be amended, and the amendment may be amended once. I would ask for the maker of any amendment to please present it in writing, since it can be then read to the assembled, it's a little bit more clearer that way if we have something written. Again, please make any amendments in the affirmative in such a way that it's clear and succinct. Ensure any amendments are germane to the original article. We don't want to change the intent of the article. An amendment must be reasonable to achieve the purpose of the warrant article. There is no revote on an article once it has been, once we have declared the vote and the next article is announced. Now, this is an important one based on our town meeting back in November. A word on Australian ballot items. Changes in the state law in 2008, 17 VSA 2640C, does allow discussion of warrant articles at town meeting, with the exception of voting on town or school officials. So we can have a discussion on it. As this precedent has been set, the voters have the right to ask for this discussion, not the select board, not the moderator. I would ask for a motion to discuss the article. We could have the discussion, and then entertain a motion in which to cease any discussion. In this way, you are making the choice of whether to discuss this article that's on Australian ballot. So that may come into play throughout the warning. When the moderator recognizes you, please stand and state your name for the minutes. And I think we'll have two scouts roaming around with microphones. Yes, they have them. So please, please raise your hands so I can see them, and then we can kind of direct you to the microphone. The maker of any motion has a right to speak first, and then citizens have the opportunity in which to speak twice on a motion. Robber's Rules does provide a time limit on a speaker, so if needed, I will remind you of the elapsed time. On the item of calling the question, traditionally here in the town of Richmond, we allow the courtesy that all who wish to speak once get to do so. In order to call the question, you must be recognized by the moderator. At that point in time, all discussion must cease, and it does require a two-thirds majority in which to call the question. So if we want to limit debate, it's going to require a two-thirds majority. And under the last article in the warning of other business, where resolutions and other non-binding articles are discussed, please put them in writing and bring them forward. Again, that helps with the flow of the meeting. I assume copies of the town report are up front? Okay. They're in the hallway. If you didn't see them, please pick one up. And a nod to our MMCTV folks who are here recording our proceedings. Thank you very much. And at that point in time, I will now ask the town clerk to please read the warning. But before I do that, it has come to my attention, and everyone else's, this young lady next to me here, this is our last time in her seat, so the select board has a short presentation that they'd like to provide.
Thank you for that. As you probably know, but may not, Linda will no longer be our town clerk as of 7:00 PM this evening. Linda has done a fantastic job as town clerk for the past 20-plus years. We owe her huge gratification gratitude. Linda knows the job very well. She knows Richmond very well. She's served Richmond very well in this capacity. We wish Linda the best in the next chapter of her life. Linda, this is a small token of our appreciation. As you know, the town report is dedicated to Linda this year. And if you've read the town report and lived in Richmond for the last year, you'll understand that this is a tough budget year, so we wanted to give Linda the nice gold watch that she deserves. But we bought her the next best thing. Linda's getting a clock with an image of the town center hand-drawn on the clock. At least it's a gold clock. Linda went to school in that building, and then she returned to work in that building. So I suspect that building is very, very personal for you. Thank you, Linda. You will still be very much involved with the town, continue to serve on boards and committees and advisory positions. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, everyone. It's really been a pleasure working with everybody, and that's what I'm going to miss, is seeing all of your faces. And like David said, I started first grade in that building, and every summer in high school, I worked there cleaning and painting, and I probably put some of that lead paint right on those walls. That's what's wrong with me. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving all of you, and I will miss you all. Thank you.
Ready? Okay. Now, I will have the current town clerk, our beloved Linda, read the annual town warning for Richmond, Vermont.
The official warning of the annual town meeting, March 4th, 2025, in Richmond, Vermont. The legal voters of the town of Richmond, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at Campbell's Hock Middle School in said town on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 10:00 AM to transact business on the following articles not involving voting by Australian ballot, being Articles 1 through 5. The voters of the town of Richmond, Vermont, and the legal voters of the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District residing in said town of Richmond are further warned and notified to meet at Campbell's Hock Middle School in said town on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 7:00 in the forenoon, at which time the polls were open, until 7:00 in the afternoon, at which time the polls will close, to vote the following articles by Australian ballot, being Articles 6 through 17. Those by Australian ballot will be Article 6, to elect school and town officers for terms posted on the ballot. Article 7, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,870,565 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town of Richmond in the fiscal year 2026. Article 8, shall the town of Richmond vote to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding 1 cent to the municipal tax rate in the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Article 9, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $500 to the Vermont Family Network to be raised by taxes to provide support for Richmond families with children with special needs, such as amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 10, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $3,000 to AgeWell to be raised by taxes to provide support and guidance to town residents aged 60 and older, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 11, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $375 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living to be raised by taxes for providing services to enhance the lives of town residents with disabilities, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 12, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $1,000 to the Committee on Temporary Shelter to be raised by taxes to provide emergency shelter, services, and housing for town residents who are homeless or marginally housed, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 13, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $6,000 to our Community Care Team to be raised by taxes to provide enrichment and food services to children, internship opportunities for youth, job training, and development for young adults for town residents, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 4, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $1,500 to Steps to End Domestic Violence to be raised by taxes for assisting town residents who have been affected physically, sexually, emotionally, or economically by domestic abuse in the transition to a safe, independent life, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 15, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $5,000 to Turning Point Center of Chittenden County to be raised by taxes to provide to town residents an inclusive, compassionate community, supporting those on multiple paths to recovery through peer-driven services and a safe, substance-free environment, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 16, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $1,000 to Hope Works to be raised by taxes for their work to end all forms of sexual violence to town residents, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 17, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve appropriating $1,000 to Lund to be raised by taxes for their work to help town resident children thrive by empowering families to break cycles of poverty, addiction, and abuse, by offering hope and opportunities to families through education, treatment, family support, and adoption, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Then by floor vote, Article 1, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. Article 2, shall the voters of the town of Richmond vote pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3840 to exempt the real estate of Richmond Rescue Incorporated from a taxation for a period of five years, beginning with fiscal year 2026. Article 3, which will be advisory, shall the select board consider changing the practice of presenting the town budget for approval by the voters in one article to presenting a town budget with separate articles for the budgets of each town department? This article is advisory, and a vote on it is non-binding. Article 4, advisory, shall the select board warn a special town meeting to see if the voters will agree to vote all public questions by Australian ballot? Article 5, to transact other business that may legally come before this meeting. And the legal voters of the town of Richmond are further notified that voter qualification, registration, and absentee voting relative to said annual meeting shall be provided as in Chapters 43, 51, and 55 of Title 17 Vermont statutes annotated. And this is signed by our select board, David Sander, Lisa Miller, Jay Fur, Bird Hill, and Adam Wood. This is probably the longest warning I've ever read.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, if we're ready to go, here we go. Article 1, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. What would you like to do with Article 1? This needs to be moved to have a discussion. Could you please stand and state your name for the minutes, please?
Mary Claire Carroll.
Is there a second to the movement of this article?
James Malaski.
It's been moved and seconded, so Article 1, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. This is typically when questions in the town report are, you have questions on that, and perhaps there's clarification that can be given by the select board, and so on. So, since the article is now on the floor, do you have any questions, comments? Is there anything the select board or the town manager would like to say on Article Seems like we've all read the town report, and we're good to go. Okay, if there are no questions, Article 1, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 1 is passed. Article 2, shall the voters of the town of Richmond vote pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3840 to exempt the real estate of Richmond Rescue Incorporated from taxation for the period of five years, beginning with the fiscal year 2026? What do you wish to do with Article 2? Is there anyone that would like to move it to the floor? Could you please stand and state your name?
Stacey Stacks.
Move, okay, the article has been moved to the floor. Is there a second on Article 2? Second? Article 2, shall the voters of the town of Richmond pursue it to vote pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3840 to exempt the real estate of Richmond Rescue Incorporated from taxation for the period of five years, beginning with the fiscal year 2026? Would anyone, anyone have any questions, or would the assembled like to say anything on this, the board or town manager? Any questions? Would you please stand and state your name? The microphone is coming to you.
Jeanann Haskin. And I just have a question. Is the fire department also exempt?
Yes, that's because it's town property.
Go ahead, Josh.
Did she say?
Oh, do you want to answer?
The answer to that is yes, the fire station is exempt because that's town property. Richmond Rescue Building is not town property.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. That's all I needed.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, here in the front. Stand, stand right up, and they'll be able to see you.
James Malaski. Just curious, is this the first time that they're asked for tax exempt status, or have they previously yet approved? It's just time for renewal.
It appears that since they built the present building on their own property, they have asked for this in state statute 32, Section 3840. We have to vote on this every five years.
But to answer your question, it's been a long-going process. Yeah, since back in the 80s. Any other questions regarding Article 2? I see, no, I saw somebody up on the top bleachers. Oh, you're pointing down there, okay. Raise your hands high. Please go ahead.
My name is Jeff Forward. I just want to say thank you to Richmond Rescue. Richmond Rescue has been like a really valuable service to our town, and in recent years, they've expanded to Heinsburg, and Starkspur, and I believe St. George. And to my mind, this is a really good move to regionalize some of our public safety services. So I strongly support this article for Richmond Rescue.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article 2 regarding the exemption of Richmond Rescue? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Okay. Article 2, shall the voters of the town of Richmond vote pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3840 to exempt the real estate of Richmond Rescue Incorporated from taxation for a period of five years, beginning with the fiscal year 2026? All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 2 is passed. Article 3, an advisory article. Shall the select board consider changing the practice of presenting the town budget for approval by the voters in one article to presenting the town budget with separate articles for the budget of each town department? Question mark. This article is advisory, and a vote on it is non-binding. What would you like to do with Article 3? I need to have it moved to the floor for discussion. Nobody wants to move it, okay? Could you please stand?
Can I move the article to the floor?
If our article's moved to the floor, would you like to second it back there? It has been seconded. Okay. Article 3 is now on the floor. It is to repeat the advisory. Advisory article, shall the select board consider changing the practice of presenting the town budget for approval by the voters in one article to presenting the, should we change from presenting the town budget for approval by the voters in one article to now presenting a town budget with separate articles for the budgets of each town department? This article is advisory, and a vote on it is non-binding. At this point in time, I guess I have, I've received a few questions anyways. Perhaps the town manager or the select board could explain the intent of this article.
Briefly, we've been asked over the last several years why we can't break the budget up in the way that some neighboring towns do it, where you would have the police budget, the highway budget, the admin budget, et cetera, so that they could be voted up or down individually. And that's really the question before us, especially when you consider that for the time being, we're voting things via Australian ballot. The way that the budget is being presented this year, with the exception of the charitable appropriations, which are being voted individually, you don't really have an ability to amend the budget, because it's on Australian ballot. But some people think that if we broke it up, voters could signify their disapproval with a portion of the budget by voting no to that section while voting aye for others. It's simply a question, we'd like to kind of take the pulse of the town on. Is this a direction you'd like us to explore, or are you content, for now, with the way things are?
Thank you. Does it, any questions regarding this article? Yes, ma'am. Please stand and state your name.
Jeanann Haskin. And I'd just like to say I am in favor of breaking the budget into departments to be voted on individually. Heinsburg does it that way, and their budget is very clean and easy to read. And to Jay's point, if the budget were to fail as a whole, the town doesn't know why the budget failed, and it'd be really challenging to try to come back with a new budget for the people to vote on. If a particular department fails, then it would be a lot easier to revamp that piece of the budget and present a new figure. So I'm definitely in favor of this. I think it's a great way to go. Heinsburg has an awesome annual report and format for reporting, and their sample ballot is really easy to read, and very clear and concise. So I agree, I think it'd be great.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article 3? Raise your hand aye. Thank you.
Jennifer Brooks. What's the cost of rerunning? So if, if a particular department fails, and you've got to rerun out ballots to, with an adjusted budget for that particular section, what's it going to cost the community to rerun that, basically that vote for that single department? And are there other options that we could go with that would accomplish the same thing, but maybe have a different cost profile?
Thank you.
I believe that it would depend on whether the select board wanted to have a tabulator vote, or a simple yes/no paper vote. If you have a yes/no paper vote, you're gonna, Justice of the peace could simply separate the two piles and add them up. We've done that on some other items, unless we were going to have a whole bunch of different ones. Unless we were going to have a whole bunch of different ones, I don't personally think I would go the price of doing the tabulator, which would cost probably close to a thousand dollars with also buying your tabulated ballots. And then you would have, no matter what, you would have the postage that people ask for absentee ballots, and the clerk's office would have to stuff them, prepare them, and send them out.
So that's a statement on the cost. Did you have another part to that question, or was that? Please use the microphone, thank you.
I'm so sorry. So it sounds like minimum a thousand dollars plus a bunch of people time plus a bunch, like, so the tabulator sounds more expensive. This is a clarification, tabulator more expensive, and minimum a thousand dollars for some of the materials than an unknown amount for postage, people's time. So we're talking several, like, probably in excess of five to six thousand dollars probably by the time we're done?
She didn't go with your estimate. That wouldn't be that expensive, but.
And then the cheaper route may be much less than that?
Right, the cheaper route would just be a yes/no question. We still have to mail them out, and they're a dollar a piece to mail. We already have all the election envelopes, we wouldn't have to buy those, just make up ballots, and when they come back, the JPs would add them up.
So the point, the point, I guess, is that there is a cost to revoting a, an item.
Right, so if it's a dollar each to mail it, so there's a number of, how many voters, right? So minimum, minimum dollar amount here.
At this election, we had almost four hundred asked for absentee ballots. So that would be four hundred dollars.
Any other questions? Yes, up in the bleachers, third row.
Jennifer Sprague, I could probably count, how many departments are we talking about?
Could you grab a hold of that?
Oh, sorry.
There you go, thank you.
Jennifer Sprague, how many departments? I could count it out of the book probably, but how many would we break down to?
So if you decompose the ballot, what would be the projected amount of departments that would reside on that decomposed budget?
I think so, I think it's about ten. Well, town admin, assessors, planning and zoning, police department.
So that would be?
That's five. Fire department, recreation and trails, charitable appropriations. We have contracted appropriations, keeping track, and then highway. So I think it's about, about ten.
We would have the option, I believe that, correct me if you, Jeff Forward, you might know, Heinsburg, I believe, breaks it into three, is that right? Public safety, admin, and highway? Yes, there, okay.
Any other questions on Article Three? Right in front of you, Malcolm, right there, yep. Please stand and state your name.
Jake Levison.
Thank you.
Sure. Just wonder what the sense of the select board is vis-à-vis this item. Certainly, if, if we don't break it up, and it fails, a piece fails, it's the same as if the whole budget fails.
That's a good question. We're looking for the will in the sense of the taxpayers. The budget could be broken down in many different ways. Of course, you know, ultimately, the voters decide to approve the spending, but we're sort of looking for direction on if the budget were broken down, what that, what you would want that to look like in future years?
Oh.
We're just starting the process of contemplating it, so I don't think we have a clear direction yet. I think that's, this is the beginning of our process.
So to answer your question, Jake, it's still the beginning, they don't have a, they don't have a consensus yet. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, right up front here.
Fran Thomas. I'm certainly against this, having been on the select board for nine years and worked on putting a budget together. You work together, you look at all departments, and in, and how they relate to each other. And I feel that trying to separate them is a way of sort of, if you have a bone with one department, but really don't understand how it fits with the others, it's, it's a way to sort of cherry pick and not really look at the budget as a whole. And if it fails, then we don't have a complete budget, because we're missing a point, and we'll have to have multiple, you know, possible, multiple elections in order to get a final budget. There's a, a turn, you can have a turn to give your input on the budget when the select board is working on the budget. And they had, they pretty much this year publicized when they were having budget meetings. And that's your time to come in and give them your opinion so that they can change your mind. And if you sort of followed the process at all this year, you could see that they, they started with one budget and then amended it as they went along to come up with a budget that they felt met the needs of the town. So I think you had, that's your time to give your input on amending the budget. I went to one of the informational meetings, and I was one of maybe two people that were there at the informational meeting. So that's another place, you can't amend things there, but that is certainly another place where you can get more input and understand what the budget is about.
Thank you. Right across the aisle.
Rick Barrett. All of Fran's points are extremely well-made. However, I think when we went to the Australian ballot, the whole point was to give more people in the town a say as to what the budget items are. One of the problems, Fran, with going to the meetings is the same problem you have with coming to town meeting. In today's world, a lot of people are working, they have children, they're working two jobs, they can't come to the informational meetings. So just a thought, if you do, if you separate the budget and it's spread over, you know, your Australian ballot, people have the opportunity to vote on individual departments, as you would if we were still presenting the budget here in town meeting. Here in town meeting, we could vote, we used to be able to vote line item by line item, we could adjust amounts up and down all over the place. With Australian ballot, there's no chance for any adjustment unless we do what you're proposing. So my suggestion is think about that, and think about how many more people in the town we want to have, we want to give the ability to, to adjust these items.
Thank you. Other comments? Way in the back, Malcolm, okay, way in the back.
Jeff Forward again. I'm also a former select board member, and I agree with Fran Thomas. If a budget or a portion of the budget fails, it's incredibly disruptive. And, and there is very little information for the, for the select board to work with as to why. Even if you were to separate out departments, as Heinsburg has done, you don't necessarily know why a particular department would have failed. For example, in, in Heinsburg, several, several years ago, when they did this, the police department budget failed. And it was during the time of George Floyd and the defund the police effort. And it was unclear as to the, whether it was, had to do with the performance of the police or a, a national effort. The consequence of that vote is more than half of the police department quit in Heinsburg after, after that vote, because they felt it was a, a vote of non-support. I, I'm strongly against this, this measure. I think Fran is correct, that the select board spends a great deal of time trying to put together this budget. And I think the answer to Rick Barrett's question is for us to go back to this town meeting format where we can discuss items, change the budget as we feel we should, and have a, a final budget at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Three? Right up here in the front?
James Malaski. So I have the feeling that this kind of micromanages the town process. I think one of the responsibilities of the select board, and the reason we elect you is one of your things is to go through and vet out a, a properly vetted and prepared budget. And also the responsibility of the department heads to put their best numbers forward for what they think the town can, can support. My concern would be if we have multiple departments that we're voting on, you may have four or five that don't pass, you've now got to have another election on those. Out of those four or five that don't pass, half of those may pass and half may not. Again, you have to go through the process once again until everyone passes and we finally get a town budget. I don't know what the turnaround time is to warrant a meeting before you can have a vote, but I could see this could bleed, if we have a town meeting in March, and we have to establish a tax rate by June, I don't know whether there's sufficient time in there to have multiple votes. So I would support Fran's position. I know the select board has been very communicative as far as the budget process, inviting people to give input. And I know you all have an open ear to the community if people have concerns about the departments, where they could voice them early in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, first time around? Yes, ma'am, right there.
June Heston, also a former select board member. I would agree with the other former select board members. This is a long process, building the budget. And every fall, there's a meeting once a month on the budget, and those meetings are very specific on what part of the budget will be discussed. So everyone in town has an opportunity, and now that we have all of our meetings via Zoom, you can sit in your living room and participate. I also disagree with separating it out, because a lot of time and effort goes into this process, and there is an opportunity for everyone to participate if they choose to. It is very disruptive to have those changes made at town meeting day, because that's when you decide to get involved. So I, I would like to not see this pass.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Three over here in the back corner?
Lisa Corey. I just wanted to say vote no on a line item. Doesn't actually tell you anything about whether people like the line item or not. It could be they want actually more money. I could see people wanting to give the highway department more money given their flooding. It could be they want to switch things around in that part of the budget, and it, it may not be very different. So it could go either way. I think there, the select board has given a lot of opportunity throughout the fall for people to come in and talk to them. Anyone can always, you know, call or write them, and I found they're very responsive. And I think if they haven't done it before the town meeting day or voting day, I don't know what the likelihood is of them coming in afterwards to explain why they voted against a particular line item. So I'm against splitting it out.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Three? The advisory article, we're, oh, way up front. Up by the check-in station, please. Why, yes, you do, because those in the, those in the back can't hear you. Yes, thank you.
I believe in part of the process.
Please state your name.
My name is Becky Burke, or Rebecca Burke. This was a frustration I had with school board budgets as well, is you don't see the work that these people do preparing for this. And the number of people who actually show up to help out at the beginning stages, it's not okay for them to show up at these meetings and negate everything because they've had the opportunity. Even if they work two jobs, it's still videotaped, they can get it from Mount Mansfield Community Television. There are ways to get information, and to show up at the last minute and negate all that work, it's really not fair to the people that we elect, that we trust, and it's a waste of taxpayer money.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Three? Yes, right in the back. Please stand up.
Hi, Bruce LaBouny. As of now, we are voting on a four million dollar budget, and the select board has an opportunity to spend that any way they want. They can put it, we are not voting on a line item budget, we can spend that any way we want. If we were to break it out by departments, would the money then stay in that department?
Go ahead. You want to say?
My understanding is there is limitations specifically on highway reserves, but even if we broke it out statutorily, there wouldn't be any obligation to take the money in those pots legally and spend it on those specific items. And obviously, politically and accountability to our neighbors, there would obviously be a social obligation there to do that. But legally, I think aside from the highway specific funds, there is no obligation to follow those individual pieces.
Thank you. Did that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions on Article Three? Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to point out, we've got professional managers who run the departments. I think we have nine different categories in our budget. Each one of them collects information all year. They don't do it just at budget time. They're collecting information the entire year, they're seeing what works, what doesn't work, improving it each year. And I rely on those people. I don't know what they know. They know how to do it, and what we see is the result of their expertise. So I really don't like the idea of putting emotion into a budget decision. They do it not emotionally, they come to work every day, they know the problems, they know the questions and the answers. I'd like to keep it that way myself.
Thank you. Other questions, first time around, right on the bleachers, second row.
My name is Fritz Martin. I'd like to call the question.
The question has been called. Now, remember that this.
I'd like to move to cease, cease discussion.
Right, calling the question, we're ceasing discussion at the moment. So what's in front of us, folks, is the question has been called, but you get to decide whether or not you want to continue debate. In order to sustain the calling of the question, that needs a three, two-thirds majority. So all those in favor of calling the question and ceasing the debate, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The chair is in question. So I will, I will just, we will drop to a, a different style here. We're going to, we're going to go to a standing vote to call the question. All those in favor of ceasing discussion, please stand up. And justice of the peace, if you could do your counting, please. Actually, you know what? Let's just, let me get a sense of this. You can, you can, you can sit down. All those opposed to calling the question, please stand up. Okay, now it's a whole lot more. Okay, the question has been called. Is there a challenge to the chair? All right. The question's called, there is no longer any debate, therefore, we're going to strictly go right to Article Three. Now, just as a reminder, be, pay close attention to this, because this says the advisory, shall the select board consider changing? Okay, that's what you're voting on. Shall the select board consider changing the practice of presenting the town budget for approvals by the voters? And currently in one article, to presenting the town budget with separate articles for the budget of each, okay? So we're, we're voting on whether or not the select board should consider moving to this multiple line. line items. The article is advisory and the vote on it is non-binding. So you're giving a sense to the Select Board what you'd like to do. All those in favor of changing the practice of presenting the town budget, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Did you get a sense? Got a sense? Okay. Thank you for that. These advisories are a little tricky, so I appreciate that. Article Four, another advisory article. Shall the Select Board warn a special town meeting to see if the voters will agree to vote all public questions by Australian ballot? What do you wish to do with Article Four? Again, it needs to be moved to the floor for discussion purposes. Anyone want to move Article Four? Up in the bleachers there, please rise and state your name. Okay. Hang on. Give her a microphone so the town clerk who is.
Shannon Dufour Martinez.
You're moving the question?
Moving the question.
Okay. Is there a second? Second here up front? Got that? Okay. So the article has been moved to the floor. And the article is, Article Four Advisory, shall the Select Board warn a special town meeting to see if the voters will agree to vote on all public questions by Australian ballot? Again, I would ask the Select Board or the town manager and what to speak to this as to why it is on the warning.
It's pretty simple. We, last year, moved all financial questions, all budgetary questions, to Australian ballot, but not all questions. So for example, Article Two about exempting Richmond Rescue, that had to be voted on here. And any other public questions like, you know, if we wanted to do a, I don't know, literally any other question besides voting on the budget would still have to be voted here at town meeting. So that means that the people who might want to have a say on exempting Richmond Rescue, but who couldn't make the meeting, would not get to vote. So it's basically make everything Australian ballot or keep it where the money is Australian ballot and other questions are handled here.
Okay, with that explanation, are there any questions on Article Four? Right here in the back? Yes, Toby Buxton. So this essentially ends town meeting? Is that, is that the, I guess, how the Select Board is presenting this advisory question?
Well, that's an excellent question. You'll notice that, well, sorry, I don't mean to give empty praise, but it is a good question. Article Five, to transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting is kind of the everything else question. And so for example.
But it's also non-binding.
It's also non-binding, correct. So if there was a movement to have Richmond ban nuclear weapons until.
Or free Palestine.
Or free Palestine.
Whatever this happens to be, flavor of the day.
Exactly.
So we could come for that.
We could still come for that.
Yahoo. But it would be non-binding. Any other questions? Yes, over here on my right.
Raymond Balaga. Would any other questions include the advisory question like Article Three? So in other words, would we have an Australian ballot on advisory questions with this article?
My sense is no because advisory questions, we're looking for advice. We're looking for verbal input. But this particular article says, shall we warn a special town meeting to see if we will vote all public questions? So this isn't setting it in stone. We would have the ability to say on that special town meeting warning, that advisory articles would continue to be discussed in person. That it would be something we'd have to state when we warned that meeting.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Other questions here up front?
Hello, I'm Ike Patch. I just wanted somebody to give a clear definition of what public means. Public questions, there's no definition that I know of. So please give me a definition or otherwise this is sort of vague. Thank you.
We're all up here frantically Googling. Under 17 VSA Section 2103, a public question, and this is a direct quote, "Public question means any question issued, proposition, or referendum, whether binding or advisory, submitted or required by law to be submitted to the voters of the state, or any political subdivision of the state for a decision." So again, we could choose when we discuss this topic at a special town meeting, whether to exempt advisory articles. But that's, that is the legal definition of a public question.
Any other questions way in the back?
Jeff Horford again. I have to say I'm confused. I have really appreciated this town meeting because I have learned from the debate. I've found agreement with folks that surprised me at times and found commonality with my neighbors. And I, what I'm confused about is how to vote on this. I would like to continue the tradition of town meetings. You know, this is good, but it would be better if we were to vote on the budget as well, in my, in my mind. This question doesn't, isn't for that, as I understand it. And I'm, if I, if I were to vote yes on this, would that mean that we would have another meeting to preclude this kind of town meeting? Is that, is that how this would work?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good question, Jeff. And I'll restate it such that someone on the board can respond to this, but this is an advisory. Shall the Select Board warn a special town meeting? So another meeting here in the future, to see if the voters will agree to vote on all public questions by Australian ballot? So this would seem to indicate that the Select Board would take your advice and warn a special meeting to see if the voters will agree to vote on all public questions by Australian ballot. Would this be somewhat akin to the November 4th meeting? The special town meeting there?
Yes, it would be similar to the November 4th meeting that we had about moving the budget to Australian ballot, but the question would be, do we move all public questions to Australian ballot? The budget's already been moved to Australian ballot.
As another example, a couple of years ago, we held a special town meeting on a Saturday morning across the street at the library, excuse me, down the street at the library to discuss whether to have town meeting on Monday night or Tuesday. So there was, it was not just an open and shut vote. People came, debated, discussed, and then voted. And so that's kind of what we're looking for here is, is this topic of enough import to people that they want to get together as a town and discuss it? I would like to remind people, just for the sake of doing it, that the question of moving financial items, budgetary items, to Australian ballot passed last year 62 to 57. Five votes made the difference between the budget continuing to be a town meeting topic and it being on Australian ballot. I don't call that, and this is just my opinion, this is not ex cathedra as a Select Board member, is that I don't feel comfortable having that tiny margin of the town making the decision about how best to handle voting. But that's, I would like more input, more voters, more discussion. That's my preference.
Is there a follow-up?
Could I? So it would seem to me that this is actually a surprising turnout to me. And you could have answered that question here today. And a special town meeting, oftentimes those are much smaller, fewer attendance. Even in the meeting that we had about the budgetary one, it was only about 100. And I don't know, my guess is there's more than 100 people here. So I don't know, you know, what I would like to do is I would like to say no to this idea and for us to discuss it under other business today. We could do that because it's just advisory. Is that correct, Clint?
That's how, that's how the Select Board wrote it in the, in the warning, correct?
So whatever happens on this one, we could have an advisory, we could have another discussion about even whether or not we want to go back to a special town meeting to decide to go back to the budgetary process that we had before. Could we not?
That is certainly, that's certainly able to transact any other business under Article Five. That's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate all the people who've come out. Maybe you'll get an answer.
Okay. Other questions on Article Four? Way up on the top of the step of the, someone can pass that up to her.
My name's Art Hamlin. The reason there was so, such a close margin on the vote may have been because it was voted here and not on Australian ballot. If it was put on Australian ballot, I think the numbers would have been greater. The difference would have been incredibly big. People want to be able to vote on this stuff. Australian ballot gave it to us. I've been coming here for 40 years, not missed a, I've only missed a few. And this morning, when I got up, I felt like, wow, I don't have to go. The only reason I've been coming here, it seems like, and I thought it was for the food and the Girl Scout cookies and the parade and fireworks, but it wasn't. It was because I was so afraid stuff is going to get voted in that I oppose by so few people. I had to be here to do what I could do to stop it from happening, and it didn't work because I had such a small part of a small group. And there were so many other people that couldn't be here that had a right to be here. That's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Four? First time around. Hang on, our town clerk has a question.
I guess it's more of a statement. We have approximately 133 people in the room right now. That's no more, no less than we usually do for voting on our budget. And I sent out way over 300 ballots to people that requested them. I believe it was like 360 something. And unless some more have come in, there was like 60 people that have not even bothered to send it back. So there's another $60 that the town office wasted sending them to people that asked for them and don't bother to vote them. Plus our time and the expenses of all the equipment to do it with.
Linda, I hate to disagree with you because you're, you know, Linda, but some of those ballots may be being brought in by hand and dropped off today.
I think she, she talked about.
Okay, but that's, don't talk about wasting until the day's over because those could all get voted.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments on Article Four? First time around, up in the bleachers.
I'm Charlotte Phillips. I feel like this isn't, it would be more interesting to have this discussion next year and do a comparison on how many more people voted on Australian ballot on the budget compared to came to town meeting and voted on the budget. Are people exercising the opportunity to vote? Because even as we send out ballots and we're hoping for people to participate more, we're still not seeing the civic engagement that we would, everybody would like to have. Everybody was here, right? And so it would just be interesting to have the data of has moving the budget to Australian ballot actually increased our town vote participation in voting on the budget?
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Four? All the way in the back, first time around.
I'll be vote, I'm Patty Prushett, and I'll be voting no on this article because I really believe in democracy and, and talking about these things. At that special meeting where we changed our town meeting so dramatically by five votes, it was interesting, the next thing we voted on was a discussion about a budget item. And the people were able to amend that item by $200,000, decreased it. And it just kind of showed that when the people are understanding and hearing what's going on, they can make changes. So I would vote no on more topics that we can't talk about and change in a public setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments first time around on Article Four? Yes, ma'am.
Jean Anne Haskin. And I just want to say, in my mind, a democracy is giving everyone the equal opportunity to have a say. And by putting a vote on an Australian ballot, you give everyone that opportunity. Not everybody can or even wants to come to a in-person meeting. A lot of people are afraid to stand up and voice their opinions. And by giving them the opportunity to put their opinion on paper is a democracy in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions on Article Four? All the way in the back.
Hi, Sierra Yuric. I'm just a little confused. It sounds like we're voting on whether we want to advise the Select Board to have a separate special meeting on how do you change the voting style?
That is the way it's written, correct?
Why aren't we, I don't understand the point of doing out a special meeting and not doing it now? What's the benefit of the special meeting?
I think by statute, we have to change the voting, the voting on budgetary or other items at a special. That, that close? How's that? I think by statute, we have to have a special town meeting to change the voting style. So that was why we had a special town meeting ahead of this town meeting, and that's why we would be considering having another special town meeting to change that. So it's a process detail.
So I think just one thing to add, that question could come before this meeting. It doesn't have to be a special, it could be an annual meeting like this meeting is or a special meeting to make these votes. I think that the Select Board chose to do it in November prior to this. I know there was some feedback from community members asking to have a vote for this budget cycle to go to Australian ballot, which is why the Board chose to do a special meeting. But we could also wait till next annual meeting and put that question about all public questions at next annual meeting. That would also work.
Does that help clear that up?
No, sorry.
The difference is, right now, it's worded as an advisory question, so we can't act on it now. We would need to warn another town meeting where it is warned as an action item. And so we could warn it as an action item at the next town meeting, annual town meeting next year, but it would have to be warned differently.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment that I find personally kind of interesting is there are 12 people in the gymnasium here today that have already cast an early ballot. So I just thought that was an interesting item. They've done it by mail or came into the office. Perhaps they were worried they might not get here today? It's just my thought of the moment.
Okay. More data from the town clerk. All the way in the back.
Jennifer Brooks, I'd like to call the question and end discussion.
Okay, the question has been called. And as I remind you from the last article, it requires two-thirds of the majority who wish to call the question and cease discussion. So all those in favor of calling the question or ceasing discussion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The question has been called. Okay. So going to Article Four, and again, this is. So going to Article 4, and again, this is an advisories article. Shall the Select Board warn a special town meeting to see if the voters will agree to vote all public questions by Australian ballot? So for voting for this, you are asking this, or you're advising the Select Board to warn a special town meeting. And if you're voting against it, you don't want to have them warn a special town meeting. If I got that right. Okay. All those in favor of Article 4, please so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The noes appear to have it. The noes do have it. You've got your sense. The Select Board is appreciative. The Select Board, when they created this warning, they put Article 5 to transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting. They put that there. We traditionally have it at the end of our meeting. And unless there is an objection, I am going to move to, I'm going to table Article 5 until we step through the balance of the warning. Are there any objections to that? There is, okay. So we can, okay. So I don't have unanimous consent, so I must consult. So we're going to do Article 5 now? Because I'm reminding you that we, by Vermont state statutes, we can have discussion on Australian-balloted items. We can have discussions. We just can't amend or change things.
And while Clint is asking us to stand by here, I just want to give you a little information that we are having the annual Regis Clinic that's sponsored by the Richmond and Huntington Town Clerks. It will be Saturday, March 29, up at the Huntington Town Garage. You turn in right just past their fire station, nine till noon. And if walk-ins are welcome, it's $20 a backseat. If you want to make an appointment, the links are on both the Richmond website and the Huntington website. And unfortunately, we have no lunch here today. Lots of Girl Scout cookies, but we were unable to find a group that was able to provide luncheon. So I find that sad, but.
Okay. So there was an objection to my desire to change the flow of the meeting. So we can have Article 5 if they want to move, if someone wants to move down on the floor, we can do Article 5. Article 5 to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Is there a motion in which to put Article 5 on the floor? Here we go. Yeah. Background's wrong. Question's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Okay. Article 5 is now moved onto the floor to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Is there any discussion on Article 5, points, comments? Anything at all? Again, anything that we do is non-binding? Yep, go ahead in the back.
First, I want to apologize to my neighbors for talking so much today. I hope you'll forgive me. I would like to, in light of the last article, I would like to move an advisory article to say, shall the Select Board warn at the next annual town meeting a vote on whether we should return to voting on the town budget from the floor by voice vote?
Okay, if you have that written, could you bring that up forward so I can have Remember, these are non-binding issues. Okay. Here's what's in front of me as far as transacting another piece of business. Shall the Select Board warn at the next annual town meeting to vote on whether we should return to voting on the town budget from the floor by voice vote? Is there a second to this piece of business? A second there? Okay.
Next one.
Okay, there's a second. So we can have a, again, recall, this is non-binding, but I guess we're giving a sense. Shall the Select Board warn at the town, next annual town meeting to vote on whether we should return to voting on the town budget from the floor by voice vote? And since Mr. Ford, you are the maker of the motion, you get to speak first.
I don't think I actually need to speak to it. I'm genuinely curious for, about the sense of the room as to whether we can, should move back to a more traditional town meeting. And I hope to advise the Select Board on that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on this, way up to the top?
Art Hamlin again. I wonder what the sense of all those people who are not in the room right now is about this move. That's who I'm concerned with, all those who are not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions up here in the front row? Raise your hands nice and high so I can see them.
So would this be a public question that would then be decided in a small group like this? Or would this be on the Australian ballot? Because I agree with Mr. Hamlin is what we're doing is we're usurping the democratic process and giving those unable to attend this meeting to make a decision on whether our budget is going to be passed by a small group minority representation of the voting taxpayers in Richmond, which goes back to Jay's comment earlier on a small group that made a decision to go with Australian ballot versus town meeting.
Again, it's non-binding, but this is what the discussion's about.
Clint, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
So you can actually do it two different ways. We could, at the next meeting, warn a question that would be voted by voice vote of those in attendance to put the budget back on to voice vote. Or you could warn a question of, should we put the question of how we wrote the ballot on Australian ballot to then let it be voted by Australian ballot of should we put it back on voice vote? So one calls the question in the meeting like this and answers it. The other one calls the question of putting it on Australian ballot to have a larger group of people vote on Australian ballot about how they would like to then vote the budget in future years.
Thank you. You have a follow-up?
I do. So it sounds like there's no way that you can, by Australian ballot, make a decision on this.
Sorry, you, maybe, it does get a little confusing. You could do it by Australian ballot, but in order to get to Australian ballot, you would have to have this group here, say it was warned today. You would have to say, should we put this on Australian ballot in the future? And then this group would have to say yes or no to that.
So it's actually a catch-22. Australian ballot can't make a decision on doing a town meeting decision versus Australian ballot.
Right. You have to have the voice vote first to put it on Australian ballot. Another way to get to that is if we had all public questions by voice vote to go to Australian ballot, then it would be a public question, it would be by Australian ballot. So it, there's layers to it. I hope I'm explaining it well. No, it couldn't be made today to put it on Australian ballot because it's not a warned item. You have to warn that as a legally warned question, it would be a binding article to put it on Australian ballot, ask the question about how you vote the budget. Hopefully, that's enough. I bet I'm going to stow it for everybody.
They all look out there like it's very clear. Any other comments on this, first time around, all the way to the back?
Kyle Brooks. I haven't seen any progress maybe on having some method of getting the budget out for comment in a non-meeting sense, you know? So we vote on Australian ballot, is there an alternative way that could be developed such that you can bring those people in who have less time, the ability to have a voice offline? That might promote and allow people to have the input, but not mandate that it is applying at the last minute input.
Go ahead.
So that's a good question, one that we've talked about a bit with the Select Board. One proposal for next year would be to set a date in early January before we have to finalize the warning and kind of hold a community feedback, sort of like one last chance to advise the Select Board on the budget. Bring people together for that. It would be advisory to the Board as the Board would still be setting the final budget, but it would be a way to hear final feedback from maybe a larger group of people and then attend the budget building meetings. And then after that, have another meeting to finalize it, and then it would go out on Australian ballot. But that might give a chance for people to have more feedback in a more structured setting.
And to add to what Josh just said, the budget, as it's going through the draft process, is always available on the town website labeled "Draft." And so anyone who wanted to, if you did not know where to find it, for example, you could call and say, where would I find the budget? I know I've met personally with constituents who've asked to go over the budget. I've met people at Sweet Simones, and I've met people at the library to say, well, here's where we stand now. Now, mind you, this is still in draft, and we're planning on discussing the police budget at the next meeting. But we're always happy to explain it. We want the greatest amount of input we can. And sometimes Monday night is not an easy night for people. We did have a budget information session this cycle that was on a Saturday morning, but it could be through sheer dumb luck that Monday nights and Saturday mornings are both bad for some people. We want to get as much input as we can, absolutely. And so whatever we can do, if we want to have a dedicated meeting that is specifically for citizen input, some towns do this, they call it Pie Day. And they, people bring pies, and we all sit around eating pies and discuss citizen input on the budget. Whatever it takes, we're happy to do it.
Thank you. All the way to the back, guy with the hand right there.
Brian Chevron. If only there were a day for public feedback. Isn't that why we're all here? Why have a separate public forum in January that people will have to seek out the date for? You know, are we going to send out mailers to everybody in town and waste a few thousand dollars on that? You know, are people going to have to look for it in front porch forum or, you know, on the town website? Why not just use this day that we all know that we have a meeting to discuss town business? Why not bring the discussion back here so that people aren't just blindly voting if they didn't get a chance to tune into a budget meeting or whatnot? This is the day that we have set to do that. This is the day that we have set for you to hear us on these matters. Why set up all these other meetings and, you know, just get the opinions of a few people who might be available on a Tuesday night at 8:00? This is the day.
Thank you. All the way in the back.
Patty Prushant. I'd like to suggest a way that we can have our pie and eat it too. And that is the way that my sister, who lives in New Hampshire, what they do so that everyone has a voice is that they have a meeting in, I believe it's January. And at that meeting, so in essence, we'd be changing the date of town meeting, and we wouldn't call it that because then we'd have to go to the state. So we would have a meeting, and at that meeting, what they do is the Select Board presents the budget. The people can make amendments and have that power and say, people vote on those amendments, things are changed. And you end up with a budget that the group has agreed upon with the Select Board. And then on Town Meeting Day, they vote on that budget. So in other words, you have sort of binding advice that is voted on through the amendment process the way we used to do during town meeting, but we do it in January. And then in March, we have our town meeting, and we vote on that budget by Australian ballot. So everybody gets to vote on it. And you still have that opportunity for citizens who are willing to go to a very long meeting like today, which is, you know, kind of arduous, who really look carefully at the budget, make their suggestions, vote blah, blah, blah. I think this way we get the best budget. And so I think this discussion is good and advisory to the Select Board. Let's try to get creative about solving both of these problems.
Thank you. Other comments, first time around, over here. I'll turn around, 180 degrees. Ray, yell at him. Thank you.
Ramon Malaga. This is a question asking for some clarity maybe to Jeff, I'm not sure. The intent of this motion, is this so that when this article is warned for the annual meeting next year, that we get together and decide at that meeting whether the future town budgets will be approved or disapproved at this meeting? Or is this an article to determine whether in the future the budget would, or the decision to, or whether to do it here or not would be done on Australian ballot? You talked about two options, and I'm just asking for clarity. Which one are we trying to get to with this? Or does it?
I think that's a good point. It's important at this juncture, and I'll let Jeff speak to it here in a second. But as written, just so we remember what was written about this. Shall the Select Board warn at the next annual town meeting to vote on whether we should return to voting on the town budget from the floor by voice vote? That was the intent of this element on Article 5. Jeff, would you like to provide any clarification to that to answer Ray's question? Can you get him a microphone?
Ray, more the former than the latter. Not suggesting that this be considered, that the Select Board make this change or that we make this change. What my intent was, was to bring the sense of the room to the Select Board for them to make a decision on whichever way we vote on how to go back to a traditional town meeting. Whether it's Australian ballot or going from the floor, I don't know what the statutory requirements are. But my intent is just to bring the advice of this room to the Select Board on that question. Does that clear up your question, Ray?
Okay. Any other questions, first time around? First time around. You're going to have to sit. You've already spoken on this once. Go ahead, June.
June Heston. I agree with Art Hamlin that if you do a vote in this room, you're still getting less than 5% of our voter population in Richmond. That is not a good measure of how people want to vote. So if you decide that you want to ask this question, I propose it be done by Australian ballot so you get as many of the voters in, input on this.
Thank you. Any other questions, first time around, all the way in the back, right there?
I'm Amy Alexander, and I just wanted to put a face to Art's comment about the people not in the room. In order to be here today, I had to take vacation time, and I'm paying a babysitter $25 an hour so I can be here for two hours. That's all I get. So all the people who can't be here deserve the opportunity. So all the people who can't be here deserve the opportunity to vote on how we vote, and that would be Australian ballot.
Thank you. Right up here up front. Stand right up so he can see you. Thank you.
Chi Chi Barrett. I want to be sure that I understand all of this before I vote. I don't know if other people feel that way too, so I wrote it down. So my understanding is, you have to vote in the present format to change, excuse me, I'll start again. You have to vote in the present format of voting in order to change the future format of voting. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's well said.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this first time around? Or second time around, Art? You good? Okay. All right. Remember, folks, this is under Article 5, transacting other business. It's non-binding, but in front of me, we have a motion and a second in which to get a sense on what the population, the voters want. So I'll repeat this item that's on Article 5. "Shall the Select Board warn at the next annual town meeting to vote on whether we should return to voting on the town budget from the floor by voice vote? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. You have a sense. Okay. Any other business under Article 5? No one's got any other business under Article 5? Okay. Now, as I depicted in my opening comments, we do have the opportunity in which to have discussions on Australian ballots other than the election of town or school officials. So I am going to move now to Article 7. Is there a point of order?
You were moving from Article 5. Is during Article 5, are the voters allowed to just ask the Select Board a question?
That was what Article 5 was all about. Would you like to open that up?
I would like to ask the Select Board a question.
Okay. So we won't move to Australian ballot items quite yet. Please go ahead and ask the questions under Article 5.
Last night, the Select Board went into executive session and returned and said that the offer for the Chief of Police to Chief Anthony Cambridge that was given, I believe in January, the start date in February, was rescinded. And I'm sure many of you have read VT dinner articles and Citizen and things that are going on in Front Porch, not Front Porch Forum, but in Facebook. So my question to the Select Board, it sounds like a lot of, he said, she said, I haven't heard there's any charges or criminal anything. I'm just wondering, in any of the executive sessions between when you offered that job and rescinded that offer, was the chief allowed to come in and speak to the Select Board about what was, about the, whatever issues that, you know, are involved?
So I don't have any comment on that, based on this being a personnel matter. I'm not going to make any further comment on the process.
Any, you have a follow-up? Okay.
At the beginning of each executive session, you always tell us who is going to be in the executive session. I haven't been to every one of the Select Board meetings. I know it's part of the public record, I'm sure it's part of the public, it should be, who was, attended the executive sessions. I'm asking if Chief Cambridge attended any of the executive sessions between when he was offered a job and when he, when that job was rescinded. That's all I'm asking. Did he, was he part of any executive session? And I'm pretty sure that's part of the public record.
Yeah, you're correct that before, for those of you who are not a close student of the Select Board, before any executive session, it's the reason for the executive session, and anybody outside the Select Board who's invited into the meeting is named. And there have been no executive sessions in which Mr. Cambridge was invited into an executive session.
Thank you.
To clarify, he was not invited to any executive session since the offer was made. I'm relatively sure that he came to an executive session or two at some point in the last couple of years, but just not since the hiring offer was originally made.
Thank you. Up on the top of the bleachers. This is all business under Article 5, folks.
My... Got me?
Please state your name.
Art Hamlin. My question is about your reason for not being able to talk to this. Is it because he is on the payroll still, so he is an employee? That's why you're not able to talk to it? And if so, what's it going to cost us to have him removed now? What, we have, we signed an agreement with, a contract with him, my understanding is, for nearly $100,000 or $90,000? If we're rescinding that, we must have a liability, a responsibility that we're going to have to pay him to leave. Am I, am I right about that? Is that...
So at this time, he is not on payroll. He has not been on payroll, and the rescension of the offer makes it so that he is not going to be on payroll.
Okay, so he's not personnel? If he's not on the payroll, is he not personnel?
He is not currently personnel, though.
So why can't you talk to the questions that have been asked?
Because it was a hiring decision, and we're not going to discuss details of that hiring decision.
So in other words, the door is closed to us. Am I right?
I'm not going to be making any comments on that topic.
You don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business under Article 5 down here in front? Please stand so they can see where you're headed.
My name is Marcy Harding, and I just have a comment that's fairly germane to much of what we talked about this morning, and it has to do with formation of the budget and voting on the budget. And as Josh I know knows, and hopefully the Select Board knows, I raised the issue a number of times as the budget was being prepared about the work our road crew did this year and last year, and my thought that we should find a way to recognize those folks for what they've been through in two years. I also contacted a number of my friends and neighbors who live on dirt roads. Maybe I should mention, I live on Stage Road, which was really hard hit. I talked to other neighbors and friends who also live on dirt roads who agreed that the road crew, Pete Goslin and his crew, had done a really remarkable job and had gone above and beyond after these floods. And I really hope that the Select Board would find a way to recognize the road crew. After a few inquiries, I finally was told that the Select Board wanted to recognize all town employees, and there was some kind of a recognition lunch, I think in November. But I think the road crew is who really deserved some sort of special recognition. If we had the old-style town meeting, I would have stood up and suggested amending the budget to include some kind of bonus for the road crew. I think the people in this room might have been supportive of that. We've done something similar in the past. But that wasn't an option this year because of the way we changed town meeting. So I hope, if nothing more, the people that are here can join me in extending our deep gratitude to the road crew who worked so tirelessly for us over many months getting out of this terrible flooding situation. Thank you.
Can I just hang on?
I just want to briefly add to what was just said, and I was hoping to get it in ahead of the applause, which is very, very deserving. When the flooding came this year, it happened at a time of fewer personnel to work, and this was the time when the road crew were supposed to be taking their summer vacations and spending time with their families. And I think I can comfortably share that Pete Goslin's home was also severely damaged by the flooding. So in addition to canceling vacations, working mandatory overtime, 12-hour days, nights and weekends, not spending time with his family, Pete wasn't able to even reconstruct the damages to his own home as he was putting Richmond back together. They worked tirelessly, they worked as hard as they could, and they literally worked miracles, opening roads, keeping roads safe, keeping roads passable, helping people get to and from their homes. We do owe them a huge, 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 huge debt of gratitude. Unfortunately, this also happened due to the flooding in a very, very tight year, so our ability to fund all of this was severely taxed. But that's not to say the road crew is not very deserving of recognition and all the support we can give them. So please clap again. Thank you.
Any other business under Article 5? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Denise Barnard.
I'm Becky Vino.
And we would like to ask the Select Board to nominate Linda Parent as our Grand Marshal of the July 4th Parade for her service to our town.
Thank you for that.
The July 4th Committee has already invited Harland to be the Grand Marshal. The July 4th Committee invited Harland Stockwell to be the Grand Marshal. Yes, that's the July 4th, different from the Select Board, but he is enthusiastically accepted and is very much looking forward to it.
Denise, Linda, and town of Richmond, I would be honored to drive Linda in the parade in a classic car of her choice.
Any other article? Did you have a follow-up? Then you have to wait. Yes, sir.
Hi. Brian Chevron again. Last year at town meeting, I think in part because we were reviewing the budget here, there was a nice projector, which was really helpful because it kept us all on track with what we were talking about at any given time, what article we were on, the exact wording of the questions that we were going through. And I imagine, I can't quite remember, but I imagine that we might have even been able to adjust that live as people submitted, you know, new motions when we got to this general part. That would have been really helpful this year, I think, just because it's hard to hear from all corners of this room. It's hard to stay on track with exactly what we're talking about, and also for people who, you know, need either a written version because they can't, you know, otherwise, you know, understand what we're talking about. You know, I don't know if we've ever had a budget for an ASL interpreter, if that's been needed by anybody in the community, but seeing a little more assistance and accessibility at future town meetings would be really helpful. You know, I'm just standing in the back of the room, and my hearing's pretty good, and I'm still having trouble understanding some of what's going on, so that would be my recommendation for the future.
Thank you. Any other, for first time around? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Virginia Clark, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Just wanted to let everyone know that we're having another opportunity for you to have input into what happens in the town. We're starting our every-eight-year update of the town plan. In case you haven't looked at the town plan, it is under Ordinance and Policies on the town's website. Due this time next year, hopefully, Town Meeting '26, it will either be on the Australian ballot or not, depending, is the update of the town plan. We have to have it approved every eight years, and that enables us to use it to underpin our zoning ordinance, to underpin the capital plan and budget, to receive some grants and funding assistance. So it's very important that we keep it in date by updating it by this time next year. So the Planning Commission will have some various events for outreach over the course of this year, but anyone who wants to get involved in some of the sections of the town plan, there are sections on transportation, energy, natural resources, community development, economic development, any of those areas, if you're interested in working on it or participating in the discussion, then be sure to either contact our town planner, Keith O'Bourn, or myself, or some member of the Planning Commission. So we hope to get everyone involved as much as possible. This looks to the future. It's not a budgetary item, but it does underpin some of the budgetary items. So hopefully, people will be interested in the long-term future and get involved in the town plan process. Thanks.
Thank you for that. All the way in the back.
Denise Barnard. I have a follow-up to Marcy Harding's question. The last storms that we had, we borrowed from our special fund for our town to pay for the expenses of the repair of all our roads. My question is, if you know offhand, how much are we, how much did we borrow? How much did we bill FEMA? And have we received that money yet? Or when do we expect to receive the money, the reimbursements from FEMA?
So we used $795,287 from the Special Projects Reserve to go towards the recovery from the flood. Right now, we're working through the process with FEMA to submit all the expenses. It's quite time-consuming. They break it up into individual projects, so we have to go through, and Pete keeps amazing records as far as his man-hours, his machine-hours, contract-hours, loads of equipment, or sorry, loads of material, but we then have to take that, and I say "we," Duncan Wardwell is doing most of this work. He goes through and says, "Okay, FEMA wants to say Stage Road's a project." He has to go through and allocate each individual hour, machine hour, contract hour, load of stone to that road, and breaks it all out. So organizing that takes some time, and then going back and forth with FEMA on each of these projects takes time. I think right now, we're working on finalizing our first two projects with FEMA. Last flood that happened in '23, we received our first payments about a year later, and Duncan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're probably on track for about that right now, although I imagine it'll stretch out a little bit longer once we get the first payment to the time we get the last. This flood was quite a bit larger, nearing about $2 million-plus in damages.
So for the last current flood, we haven't received any of the funds back yet from FEMA?
Correct. For the '24 flood, we have not received any funds yet. Again, the administrative organizational process takes a tremendous amount of time until we get to finalize a project of FEMA, and they break it out into, Duncan, how many projects do we have? Probably 10 or so.
About eight.
About eight different projects. So it's, it just takes a lot of time to go through and assign cost to each one of those projects and make sure we're not overlooking anything. And not to get too into details, but we submit everything to FEMA. We make sure that our project manager understands everything. He submits it to his higher-ups. They review it for a month or so, will come back with a bunch of questions. We answer those. No matter how detailed we are, they always have more questions. So it takes quite a bit of time to go back and forth until they... So it takes quite a bit of time to go back and forth until they finally obligate the fines. And once it's obligated, then it takes a few more weeks, even from that time, to get a check. But yeah, the short answer is, we don't have any money just yet. I'm hoping by this summer, we'll start to see some of the projects be paid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business under Article Five? See anybody? So now we move to the Australian ballot items, and recall that we are allowed in which to have discussion on the Australian ballot items. You have the right to ask for a discussion, and I will ask for a motion to discuss the article, have the discussion, then we can have another motion to cease discussion in this process. You're actually the ones deciding on whether or not to discuss an article. So Article Six was, is exempt from that, the election of officers. Article Seven, shall the voters of the Town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,870,565 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Town of Richmond in the fiscal year 2026? And again, this is on Australian ballot, but if you wish to have a discussion on that, I will entertain a motion to open the discussion. Does anyone wish to make such a motion? We're all satisfied with that. Okay. Yeah, we are losing them. Yeah, I know. Article Eight, shall the Town of Richmond vote to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding 1 cent to the municipal tax rate in the 2025-2026 fiscal year? Again, is there a motion on the floor in which to have a discussion on this Australian-balloted No one wishes to discuss this either? Okay, fine. So instead of going through all the next 13 articles, I would suggest, unless there's an objection, that Articles Nine through Seventeen, which are categorized as a social services articles, I would entertain a motion for discussion on any of those. If anyone would like to have a discussion on any of those articles, I would be open to some motion for that. Is there a motion to discuss any of those social services articles? Very informed public. Okay. Having none, then, okay. Is it germane to this? Oh, it is not. Do you want me to? Yes, yes, by all means. So if Article Five was in its right position, we would flow rather nicely into this, but we will allow Dave to have a comment.
I just wanted to briefly, while we had your attention recognized, Lisa Miller, whose term on the Select Board ends today, Lisa decided to not run again, but she was very helpful on her, in her tenure on the Select Board. So I want to personally thank Lisa for bringing all of your expertise and guidance to us and working with us, and I'd appreciate it if you would all wish Lisa well.
Seeing no other business in which to transact? Oh, wait a minute. She has a rebuttal. Stand by.
I don't have a speech written, but I want to thank David, I want to thank this board, I want to thank this town. That's good enough.
Thank you very much. So I will entertain a motion in which to adjourn the 230th Annual Meeting. Is there such a motion? You move? Is there a second to adjournment? Second? All those in favor of adjournment, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no? Adjourn. Sorry, there's no lunch.